Okay, we should open the public portion of the meeting with pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the people who will stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See if I remember how it is.
Oh, it should be like muscle memory.
Uh, I think the first item is the website presentation.
Hi.
And.
Hi. You ready? Alright. Hi, everybody. So, I'm just going to get this set up. Um, what will happen is I'm actually going to mirror what is on my screen to the big screen. Hopefully, you will see that pop up in just a moment. That is a good, okay, beautiful. Okay. So, um, hi, everyone. We are going to talk about something that has been going on for the past couple of months. Um, this is kind of a passion project for me and something I'm really excited about. Um, and really excited that Brent brought up to us at the beginning of the school year. So, if at any point you have any questions, feel free to stop and and we'll talk about that. Um, just a couple of things to get started with. If you do want to access this presentation, there are a couple of ways you can interact with it. So, the first thing you could do, if you have a mobile device, you can just scan the QR code. Um, there is also a bit.ly link, so it's literally just B I T dot L Y slash, and then it's new Candor site. And we are going to send this out. Um, we'll probably post it on the website as well. Um, so if you don't want to follow along now, or you don't want to worry about that, no problem. Um, we can do that. Moving forward. Alright, cool. So, I'll give you a moment to scan if anyone is scanning.
Wait, talk about the old guy, huh?
Well, it's cool. You don't even have to take a picture. You just turn your camera on and it should pick it up.
Yeah, it should. Hey, Marson, can we?
And that's okay. If you can't get it, we will, we're gonna go with the button. And you can look at it after. It's all good. Okay, beautiful. So, really quick, our agenda. We're gonna talk about the overview of the process. Um, our goals, kind of what inspired this whole thing, um, what our goals were and what they still are. We're going to talk about our communication survey results. Some of you in this room were there, um, when we went, when we went over them. But what's really cool is we got a lot more responses. Um, so we're gonna reanalyze that data a little bit. We're gonna talk about our roadmap, kind of what we have been up to. And we will do a live demo at the end where we can kind of interact with our new site. Um, I do want to put it out very clearly at the beginning that we are still in beta. So, um, this, if some of you got to click through it a little bit, you may have noticed some weird things. Maybe you noticed some things are different now than they were 12 hours ago, or you know, 24 hours ago. Um, that will continue to happen. Okay? Um, so, our question, and really, um, the question that Brent has proposed to us a few times, um, even in the world language department when we had our meeting, is how can we level up, right? How can we be next level? In this case, we are looking at how can we make a high-quality product for everybody in the district. Um, many of us in here, all of us probably in here, care about Candor. We really like what we do, what we come to work to do each day, and we feel like we want high-quality products to be awarded to our stakeholders. So, our question was this. How can we level up in the field of communication? And really, who do we serve? And that is parents, that's students, that's our faculty, our colleagues, right? That's community members. And how can we make that even better? So, what we did was we deployed a survey. And this was, I believe, in the beginning to middle of October. And we sent out a Google form, and we are going to go over this. Now, this is a slide that if you were at our first stakeholder meeting, you did see. Um, but what's really cool is the data has changed. So, originally, this is what I presented on October 14th. Uh, and we have 254 respondents. And it was funny because, you know, everyone was like, wow, that's great, cool. Um, so I looked today, and we are at 490. Um, so that's pretty cool. For our small district, that's pretty great. Um, so, we're going to just very quickly take a superficial look at this data. Um, because I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but I want to pull out some trends so that everybody knows kind of what our mindset was when we did this. So, of those 490 responses, I had to update my pipe chart today, too. Um, 189 parents, and I know some of you, like Mr. Blake, are probably gonna check my math. Um, so, these are no decided squiggly's because I am not a math teacher, but we got about 39% parents and guardians. We did have 275 students, so about 56%, and community members, we were on 26. So, that is about 5% of that. And we asked questions about different things, like our app and our website. And what's really nice is that this CMS, this content management service, the website vendor that we went with, will build both of those out simultaneously. Um, so we asked a few questions. Again, this is not everything that we asked. If you're interested in that, shoot me an email and I'll send you the whole set of data. Um, but we asked, if the district had a free iOS and Android app, basically, would you download it? And we grabbed these from different stakeholder groups. So, here's the parent and guardians. Um, 82% said yes, 16% said maybe, and only 2% said no. And then with students, we had 35% say maybe and 65% say yes. And finally, with the community members, 50% said maybe, no is 4.5, and yes is a little less than half at about 46%. So, this was really important data to us. Another question that we asked is the following. So, we said, what info do you want to see on the website? Because if you were in any of those stakeholder meetings, or if you have students, or if you have seen any other website in a school, you know that it's all over the place, right? Like, some schools have different buttons here for different things. Some have a board of education button, others don't. So, we wanted to know, what do our specific people want? And that, we kind of built this based on the amount of respondents here. And the biggest, most popular one was that schedule of events. Then we've got what's happening in the buildings, followed by, um, the lunch menu, right? That's a pretty popular one. Um, activities, what's going on in the specific classrooms. Then we have info on the curriculum, the learning standards, athletics, results with those, budget information, and finally, employment. So, um, applying for job opportunities. We asked the same exact questions to community members. So, um, that was in first place, the schedule of events, budget info, what's happening in the buildings, athletic events, results, curriculum, employment, and then activities in the classrooms and the lunch menus, right? Um, and then finally, we asked the students. And of course, lunch menus are the first one, right? And then we had the schedule of events, uh, athletic event results, and then we had activities in the classroom, what's happening in the buildings, uh, curriculum, employment, which I thought was interesting, and then budget info. Sorry, Sydney, that's pretty, that's pretty small, but not yet, maybe later in life. So, then we took all this data and we said, okay, what is the thing that goes across, right? What is the most important commonality in the top items? As you can probably intuit, were the schedule, the events, right? Um, budget info was a popular one, the menus, and what's going on. So, we looked at all this data, and we sat down a lot. We sat down quite frequently. Um, Kate Atkins, our current web designer, Matt, myself, Brent, Kat, we all sat down and we had a lot of discussions, right? So, we discussed. I drank a lot of coffee. I'm sure other people did. And then we just got to work, and we started building. And I just want to kind of show you our process. Um, so in September, I believe, is when Brent called the meeting talking about our communication strategy. Then in October, this is small, I know, so I'm gonna kind of read it out. We did a lot of zooming. Um, we reached out to all the different CMS providers in the area. We talked to eSchoolView, which is now known as Link. We talked to Aptig. We talked to a bunch of them. And we got hour-long demos for each of those services. And then Matt and I kind of went back to the drawing board, and we figured out, after talking to our stakeholder meeting group, we said, okay, this is what's going to be the best of it. So, then November comes, we picked Aptig, um, which is an up-and-coming, very popular provider in this area, especially in the VTBOs and the TSTBOs regions. Um, we got trained on their, uh, their content, uh, management system. And then we had to roll over everything from our current site to this platform. And a lot of it was done with AI, which was really cool, but a lot of it is also hand-done. So, that's been a little bit tedious. Then in December, so currently, we are in build mode. So, we're working with Aptig. Um, we're meeting as a team very frequently. And what's really exciting tonight is we're gonna send out the beta link. That's going to become a little bit more public. And we're going to do what is kind of a soft launch or a beta launch. Um, and then we're gonna get your feedback, hopefully. Next month, our goal is to kind of hit a little bit of a finish line. We are going to make this public by the end of January. Um, we are going to continue to get, um, things built and reconfigured based on your feedback, and hopefully, launch at the end of the month. And then February, really through the rest of the year, is that refined piece. So, that is our plan. We are currently in December. And we are ready for what's going to happen tonight, a beta launch. Hopefully, some of you have already looked at the site. Um, and this is beta, right? So, beta means if you ever get like an iOS that's in beta, or you get a software update, things get a little weird at first. Things are going to change. Things are going to be a little weird, and that's okay. So, I talked to Matt about this image, and I was like, I want to show everyone this image tonight. And he was like, no, I think we're further than that, because the whole analogy was construction, and that we're just at the beginning. So, he said, you should show them something like maybe this. And I said, okay. So, I don't know. The vacuum's still out. We still have some cleaning up to do. Um, but our goal is to have a nice, beautiful, remodeled space, right? Um, it's going to be clean. It's going to be refined. It's going to be a little bit more minimalist. It's going to clean up and be very much in keeping with what our stakeholders said they wanted, and what they said, quite frankly, they didn't want in a site. Um, and speaking of that, we kind of went out and we did a little bit of surveillance, and we looked at other schools. Um, there are a lot of schools, some neighboring schools, that are actually using Aptig. And Matt and I and Kate all sat down, and we said, okay, we really like that they did this. We really don't like that they did this. Our stakeholder group really helped us with that, too. So, we got things like, we don't like on other school websites that this image is the whole screen and you can't see anything else. Or, we don't like that when you click the menu button, it takes over the whole screen. So, what we did was we created this bar, which is actually more, um, from the current, I might call it old, but it's the current site, um, that we have. So, our goal was really kind of a cogent experience, a very user-friendly experience, and we really hope that we did that. So, I want to show you our, our product. Um, this will go away when we do the real launch. This is just, they call it a light box. Um, this just says, hey, order data. If you have any feedback, please let us know. Um, and that, again, will go away when we launch at the end of January. So, you close out of that. Um, just to put that in your brain also, that is an option for if we did have like a snow day, if we had a delay, that would pop right up, and it would say, hey, we're having an enclosure. Um, the other option is just to put advanced. But again, I highly encourage you to click through this website. Um, it is live now, meaning you can do this. Um, but I kind of want to highlight some of the, the important parts here. So, if you, the first thing you see when you come to the website will be this image. We have a few kind of images that we'll scroll through for now. Um, it has welcome to Candor, our mission statement, and then, um, kind of taking into consideration the feedback that we got from our stakeholders. We have events. Um, so what's really nice about this is if we go to events, hey, we're here right now, right? Um, so that's the board meeting. If I were to click on this, I would then get taken to a different screen. And there's the link to our livestream. Um, there's other important data there, and I get a calendar view. Excuse me, that I can click and see other things that are happening in the district. So, that's kind of nice. I can click any of those dates, and if there is an event on that day, there's not. Um, if there were, it would populate there. So, that's kind of nice. Um, really consistent, clear design language there. And then, um, I'm just gonna go back. Um, just as a note, you can always click the top-left kind of icon there to go back to the homepage. Um, then I get this kind of navigation of events down here, so I can see what's going on. Um, just as a side note, on the backend, it's really nice for us. We update one calendar. It's a Google calendar, and it automatically updates across the board, which is very nice, yeah. Um, so we can share that. So, like, I can share that with Kat. I can share that with Brent or anybody in the district. They can update any event, and it takes about 10 minutes, and it will be there. Um, we've got our news right here. So, we had them kind of differentiate with these colors. Um, if you were to click into one of these news stories, like this one, for example, it gives you more information. Um, so here's the flyer for the vaccine clinic, and any information is down here. You can just back right out of it. We have a few different things here. Now, there are only four displayed at a time. However, if you click see all news, it will actually load everything, so you can see any news stories that have published. We just did four, just for the sake of publishing it. Athletics can have their own section, and again, this is in beta, so we can still talk about these different things. Um, and then we've got our footer. Now, there is another part. I kind of skipped over. This is the live feed. This is what's kind of cool, because if we have teachers now, especially in the elementary school, who are using a program like Remind, you might get, as parents, little reminders, little kind of blurbs about things that are going on. Um, what we really liked about Aptig is that any person in the district can be what we call a moderated user. And then they can send something out to the live feed, and then certain people who have a position to approve or deny those posts can then say, okay, let's send that to the live feed, or let's not. Maybe, you know, let's talk about that. Let's edit some info first. Um, so it's really kind of a nice system. Then, hopefully, these menus are quite intuitive. Um, we built them to be that way. Um, I just do want to highlight the Board of Education site. So, if you click on that site, here is the link to the YouTube channel. If I were to click that, what would happen is a new tab would open, and it would take us right to the streaming channel, um, and you could go to the Board of Education site, uh, livestream, excuse me. And then we have the meeting dates with the minutes right here. Um, so once they get approved for tonight, for last month, we will go ahead and loan those there. The agenda for tonight is already posted, and the archive for the meeting minutes are there. Um, so that is kind of a nice, clean design, and I just want to show you one or two more things. Um, we have the schools for the dropdown, and we will build, these are really in early development, but we will have a site for each school. Um, departments are district-level, so if you have different things, um, here, one thing we worked on a little bit today was the guidance department. You can click in there. And what we will do throughout, and I'd love your feedback on this, is we're going to keep this as kind of a standard for design language. The top will always have contacts, so for guidance, it's Beth and Jason, right, and then the secretaries. Um, and then we will have some resources, which are kind of like book links. Um, and if you have any feedback on that kind of design language, we're looking to do that throughout each department website. So, feel free to click around and let me know what you think there. Um, we've got four students. I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. We've got four students, four families, and four staff. And then finally, and those will just be links, um, like perhaps logging into Schoolagie for students, logging into School and Be Terran for the family section, and for staff, we've got Webmail, um, our current tech hub. And we're gonna add quite a few more things. And then finally, um, this is kind of cool, so we will have a dynamic staff directory. So, if I were to click this here, I'm gonna go to my computers. I can type. Um, but what's kind of cool is you can actually type in anyone in the district, type in their name, so I'll just remind. I think I'm very official. I can hear that. So, um, your picture comes up, your position comes up, um, the phone number comes up. And what's nice is that, um, this is a security feature to prevent like spam emailing. It never lists the actual email. Instead, what it does is it actually gives you a little box to put your name, your reply to address, and your message. Um, and then if that happened, you verify by doing the impossible captcha challenge. Has anybody done one of those? Where it's like, click the traffic light, and there's like, this much of a traffic light in one square. Yeah, and you get denied, yeah. Um, and then, and then I will get an email in my inbox. So, it's a little bit more safe, because what, um, companies will sometimes do is they'll just try and scrape emails off of websites and just mark it. Um, so we really think that we built a high-quality, a very secure product, um, something that, quite frankly, like, we really anguish over the details, because we want to build something that is really good. Um, we want this to be a substantial upgrade and something that's sustainable. Um, so if you have any feedback at all, we would love to take it. Matt, myself, Kate, um, feel free to email us. Or if you have any questions right now, um, we'd love to, love to answer for you. So, thank you. Yeah, Kate.
This is embarrassing that I got one of this.
Oh, it's okay.
Um, is there a way to add money to our lunch account? So, I wondered that on the other website, and I never actually, because I was just like sending money in an envelope. Oh, there is a way to do it.
Yeah, my school books.
Yeah, I think if I get to it, yeah, it should be part of the dropdown. You're gonna steal my child's ice cream.
Yeah, you can Venmo me if you want, yeah.
Okay, well, that's perfect. And so I assume that will then carry within this cafeteria once the menu.
That's a great question. Yep, so right now, we're going to have it in this food service section. I have to rebuild this still. But what you will see is when you click food service, you're gonna see each menu. Um, if you wanted to print that, by the way, you just click it, and it takes you to a new screen to download it and print it. But what you would do, what we will do, actually, is we will add a link, maybe under resources, like add funds to your student's account.
Okay. I mean, like, I, I could figure this out, like, if I.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, hopefully, it's intuitive. I hope. Awesome. Thanks. Yeah, if you guys have any questions, just send me an email. We'll put the link, um, we'll put the bit.ly link in the, in the email, and we'll put it in the email, too. So, awesome. Yeah, thanks. Okay.
Is there a question from Pete?
I, for me?
I think so.
Okay, yeah.
Is there a way on the old site and maybe this site to buy Candor gear? And like, I don't know if part of it goes back to school or fundraisers that way.
Yeah, so there's an outdated spirit we're here on there on the whole website.
Okay.
Um, where we typically do, the teams have their own, their own gear. And then I do a store twice a year, and we try to share it on Facebook. It's lucky to cancel it gets out there. Um, so I plan to do another one in the spring, but that's.
And those are in, then they're not like a store that you could.
Oh, there's an active store? There's not an active store, no?
Okay.
Ben did well.
I was watching.
Thank you. So, the livestream is working.
It is?
That's good.
Yeah.
We thought his picture was okay.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about the construction thing.
Oh, yeah.
I prefer there a lot.
Yeah, that's what I thought of it.
Okay, we need to approve CSE, CPSE reports. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we got a choice. Just a second. All in favor? Take a moment. Hi. Any votes? Okay. Minutes of meetings. First will be our last regular meeting, which is held 18th of November. Anyone find anything that needs to be conducted or have it? Looks good to me.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mike. I'll second. Thank you. All in favor? Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, next, uh, minutes of our special meeting, actually, not so much a minutes, but an acknowledgement that we had it. Sydney. Three or four sentences?
Was that good?
Comments, motion.
Okay, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Brent. All in favor? Hi. Anyone opposed? Okay, we're good. Uh, reports, financial reports.
So, um, I feel like there was just so much going on with grants. I really only want to give you guys stuff that's new, so that it catches your attention better. So, the only new thing I have for you right now is that, yay, our pre-K grant was approved. So, it only took, I don't know, the state's a little bit behind on things like that. So, that, that's exciting. That's good news. Our pre-K grant is approved. Um, other grants are in process right now, but I'll have updates for you on next month's report. Um, I, so, we have switched our fiscal advisor. We were with capital market advisors for some time, but they're out of Albany area, and it just, I feel like some things were sometimes getting overlooked. So, we switched to fiscal advisors out of, that's actually what they're called, out of Syracuse. And like immediately, they have just been so attentive on finding ways that they can, you know, save us money, uh, which is great. So, you know, the, we needed to go out for bus bonds. We actually just took surprise delivery today of the buses. Um, we kind of had heard they were, we were gonna, we've been very, we're gonna get them since like, I don't know, September, and they showed up today. So, that's great. You know, so the bus bond financing is underway. We'll basically have to upfront the money and then be refunded that when the bonds are sold and they've gone through. Um, so that, I, I've got like due diligence underway for the bonds for our bus. And then, um, we are going to do a bond refunding. So, our bonds have to be outstanding for a certain amount of time, and then your fiscal advisor luckily keeps track of these things, and they're like, hey, it's time to refund your bonds. Um, they, they have, um, savings that they like to see at like 2% of the total outstanding bond. Um, and when you hit that benchmark, they're like, okay, this is, this is a good time for you to basically refinance these bonds. So, I'm in process with that right now. There's a lot of due diligence, and, and it's great, this, you know, the, the new fiscal advisor, fiscal advisors, um, they're doing such a nice job, like walking you through these processes, because it's a lot of information that's required, a lot of legal things. Um, so that's underway. And we should stand to save about $21,000 with refinancing that bond. Um, and I said, well, what happens if we wait like a little longer? Would it be better if I waited a year? And they said, no, bond rates are going up, and we, you know, we do know, uh, the Fed is adjusting rates. But also, if we, you know, pay down with our next bond payment in June, then there'd actually be less to refinance, so the savings go down. So, now's the time before we make that bond payment in June. So, those things are in process. Um, aside from that, on the buildings and grounds, um, side of things, our fire inspections were completed, and all schools have passed, the high school passed on the reinspection. Um, we have new letters of occupancy for all of the district buildings. And I mean, I think winter's here, but it doesn't really feel like it. We have plans for snow plowing. Like, everything is well in hand. Lonnie and his crew are doing an excellent job, making sure that everything is set in case we actually get snow so fine. This is the strangest winter. I don't think we're gonna have a white Christmas. So, um, we've got a great plan in place. Lonnie has a great plan in place, um, for plowing, and very thankful that he's got that in hand, and he's the one here with his crew at 4:00 AM to plow and make sure that all the, the people came to get into the district when the buses were going out. So, um, that's going very well. Any questions?
The bond refunding, when you refinance it, you, you advise yourself, you figure out who the refundings through or who.
So, what happens is the fiscal advisors, they basically, they work with our bond council. They prepare for the bonds to be sold, and they're sold on an open market, and the, you know, the best bid wins it. So, yeah, the lowest interest rate is going to be the winner. And we're anticipating rates. I think right now the bond rates are around 1.3%, which is really, really good. Um, and they're very dynamic, like considering that the Fed is adjusting interest rates, you know, with regards to inflation pretty quickly. Um, like time is of the essence. So, those are gonna be kind of shifting, and it would be great to just have that rate locked in and then look forward. But we are looking in like the 1.3 range.
The first line, it says, are 2011 bonds?
Yeah. Yes, so we have, we have right now two bonds outstanding. There's a bond that was related to the capital project, um, that was completed in like the 2019 timeframe. So, that bond is somewhere around 16 million, and then there are the 2011 bonds, which are the other bond that's left standing, and that's roughly like 1.2 million. So, it's, it's gone, I mean, it's come paid down significantly. There's not a ton left on it, but we'll take the savings. And that the savings is net of all of the costs of bond council to fiscal advisors. So, that's, that's a good number.
Oh, so, so that really is savings, yeah?
Yep.
That's great.
Okay, we're ready, we should accept the cursor's reports. Thank Brent. Eight seconds, good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, and the next is the budget transfer report for November.
Look good, I'll make a motion.
Mike? Can you get a second? Got a choice there, okay? Um, no questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Next, we have the warrants. Uh, general fund warrant twenty-five, federal fund twelve, and school lunch fund thirteen. So let's look at the general fund warrant first.
The, uh, just a quick question, question for myself. Page seven, there's money going out to T S D boughsies for, for the capital project, I know about the capital project. How often does that go out? Is that?
This is at one time?
It is at one time.
Yes, and this is Candor's share of that project. Um, it actually was, it was included in the expenses from the fiscal year, I mean, six thirty twenty-one. But, um, the actual, like, money for it went out just in September.
Good question.
Is our psychologist on the call or does she have a regular schedule? Uh, Maria Mo?
Or, um, yes, she's, she's averaging two days each week right now, but she is hourly. So that's what she's averaging right now.
I thought you were asking, she took her donations.
Anything else on the general fund warrant? Okay, move to the federal fund. Cindy, with the ESSR money, do we have an account where we just pull that out when we need it, or do we?
Some of it is, so when we are awarded a grant, they upfront advance us, I think it's a third of the value of the grant and then we have to spend and submit for reimbursements. So technically, there's not the, the grant, um, our special aid fund doesn't have money. It, it only has, you know, what we have in there for grants at, at a given time. So really, it's the general fund that fronts the money and then the general fund is reimbursed when I get the grant money in.
Okay.
It's just through inter-fund rules and our others are well aware of it and it's just very normal.
Okay, thanks.
Cindy, on page twenty-two, Roger's rigging, or twenty-five on the bus, ready breaking for?
Twenty-two. Oh, so, me, Stephen Hunderge got, um, three new, which, what kind of machines are they? This means eight machines?
We have to get the riggers in them, uh, before she comes up.
Yeah. He used, he used his home and great grant money for that.
Okay, very cool. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, if that's it for federal funds, we can look at school lunch fund. Still purchasing ice cream, huh?
Still need it, but thanks.
Well, if everything there looks okay, you need a motion to accept the warrants.
Make a motion?
Thank you, and a second. All in favor, take a five? Aye? Anyone opposed? Okey-dokey. Uh, recognition of visitors?
We recognize.
Yeah, you were in the same chair last meeting. Any, any comments in the moment? Other than hurry up and let's get this done, is even a vote?
That did a fabulous job. Thank you.
Okay, we got how many online reactions?
Uh, eleven.
Eleven.
Okay, if anyone has anything to say now, we have a consideration, which is to accept the new board's policy manual, which we have reviewed and marked up. I, Kat, I found a couple of other things, but nothing of any substance. It's format or, uh, that spacing issue that we, you and I had talked about. I don't think I made any word changes in this at all. Though I did make one, redundancy. Um, and Hannah had submitted any changes, I don't know if anybody else did. Hannah and I caught pretty much the same one. And then I had some additions. So, uh, other than that, looks good to me, so we're looking at accepting this on, with, uh...
Do we want to amend that page thirty-two that we talked about?
Uh, yeah, we could, exactly.
Yeah. We're going to with that one, but others to read about. So that'll be with a name, so great question.
Yeah, I think that was the only thing of any substance in that thing up in the, our discussions tonight. The other things I found were those spacing issues that Kat and I had talked about. And we copy something, sometimes the programming behind it comes with it and does funky things. Okay, I believe we need a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thanks. And a second?
That's all.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Nice job, man.
Very nice.
It was really needed.
Yeah. Now, will these be available on the web?
Yeah, particularly for.
The main ones?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
The whole policy will be on the website, you all have a copy, we'll have a copy of each office. The district office is both building, I think it's. So anybody wants to check our policy, just right now. That's awesome.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anything on the consent agenda need to be pulled out for separate consideration? Okay. Any questions on any item on the consent agenda? There were some additions, we got those, uh, by email, paid from Kat. And there were a couple of additions. But if everyone's had a chance to review those.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay, take a mic, and a second? Okay, thanks. All in favor, accepting the consent agenda? Aye? Anyone opposed? Good. Okay, we moved to administrative reports. Queen presented his before, before the meeting, so we can get down to favors and do a good thing on the concert. You doing solo this year?
Oh, we should.
That's why the feet went out.
Okay, Katie, your elementary school report?
Hey, so I wrote a little bit about the ELA curriculum work that we did on December early release day. Our goal with that work was to have a vertical conversation about our new curi- our curriculums. Our PK two teachers spoke about super kids and three-six teachers talked a little bit about the side-by-side. They were able to share helpful strategies in different areas of the curriculum. It was encouraging for the teachers to hear from each other and things they've tried and things that are working. And, um, a lot of great conversations. We continued on the path of formative assessment for side-by-side and super kids were just trying to find the instructional minutes to fully implement the program. And, you know, without compromise, compromising the integrity of the program. So those were great conversations on early release day. I'm gonna turn it over to Pete, who's leading the math committee.
Yeah, you can see the work that we've, we've done, I think we reported back in, you know, a couple months ago on our initial work with prioritizing standards. Uh, but you can see that outline and body of work that we've been doing. I would say we're, we're very excited about a new program that we started in the end of November, the fluency initiative, the fluency, uh, program to, to, um, identify the fluency gaps that we're seeing. Um, the committee identified the fluency was one of the biggest, uh, weaknesses that we've had as a building. So we've had to, uh, look at ways to, to address that need. So we're piloting it right now with, um, a couple of our grade levels and our math committee members. Uh, I want to thank Matt and Ben for helping getting that off the ground because we needed the tech help. So thank you guys for that, connecting, um, classrooms with the teachers. So, um, after Christmas break, we're gonna get together back as a committee and look at taking next steps to take that pilot to a building initiative. And our committee members are gonna be the go-to professionals for teaching the grade levels, how to use it and utilizing it in the grade level. So, we're excited about that work getting done. And then another piece of the work that we're looking at in the next couple of months are how to engage families, specifically in math. And then we're also gonna talk about assessments. Um, we've talked a little bit about assessments with Katie and Kim, um, as far as math. So we'll have those conversations in the next couple of weeks and we're looking forward. And the body of work happening in math right now is, is impressive. The teachers are doing a great job leading that discussion, so appreciate that.
Yeah. Thanks, Pete, I agree, we definitely got a passionate group there working on the math committee and initiatives. It's nice to see that work happening. We held the family curriculum night, Kim and I, on December seventh. Um, I would say we're a little disappointed with the turnout, we only had about twelve people attend. Um, but again, our goal there was to involve families, give them a general overview of the programs. We're not in the classroom teaching them, but we have had a hand, obviously, in selecting them and we're in classrooms seeing them be implemented a lot. So, we answered some questions I think people had and it was, they were valuable conversations. We were glad that we were able to do that. Uh, the first trimester ended on December third. As we issued report cards, we talked about sharing those i-ready reports from the initial data that you all saw in September. There was some, I don't know, a little bit of anxiousness around sharing that data coming out of the pandemic and seeing that very few of our students were in the grade level bands that we would hope that they're in. But they were shared and I think they were received well. And again, that was a starting point, so those were reports from September. And come January, we'll be giving the assessments again and we can compare and see whether there was growth and what the progress looks like. So involving parents, again, it's the information we have, we should, we have to share it with parents so that they're aware and they begin to become used to seeing the i-ready data. Uh, quarantines, we continue to contend with the, I said daily. Um, we do have people quarantined on a daily basis, but it's not happening on the daily. Um, our numbers are as high as they have been, but we're making do. Um, some people think we're a lot worse off in terms of, you know, having to go virtual remote. We're not, we're not there, we have enough layers and I, I'm so thankful. I can't even tell you the number of people that come into the office on a given day and say, what can I do? I've got a thirty-minute free block of time, how can I help you cover? If we're down office staff or teacher aides or teachers. We just have such a great community of professionals who, you know, will come in and say, I can cover this on my own. I don't, I don't, you know, meet my co-teacher for this part of the day and I'll make it, I'll make do for a day so that I can help cover elsewhere. And we're in good shape, although we, you know, the quarantines and COVID implications continue to, to be a thing. We're making do and we're, we're doing okay. And I hope you guys have a wonderful holiday.
When, when kids are quarantined, how, how do we get their work? Bus drivers drop it off or teachers?
Parents, parents are picking it up. So we usually say, give us about a day, and sometimes teachers have it to us right away and the parents come to the school and pick up their work. So, and you, you figure kids are, they are quarantining for ten days, so typically they're not gonna say ten school days. So it's either five, six, somewhere around that number of days. And then of course, when they come back, we oftentimes have to catch them up with things, even though, you know, they'll do the work that's given to them. So yes, teachers have that challenge as well.
Is that after, uh, sharing that or are you giving questions from home, from the parents, or?
A couple, yes, a handful of parents, yep, that reached out, great questions, great conversations, really wanting more information. The parent reports don't tell it all, but we have some parents that are very savvy, involved and in the know. So, we do share more with those parents.
Katie, I appreciate you and Ken both doing that for them. Although not as well attended as Lonnie, it was, I thought it went well, it was really good.
Thank you.
And last night, doing the, the book sale with your staff, they were doing really great, I'm happy you all were doing very well, so appreciate that for them, thanks.
It was, yeah, Wendy Brudamaso and Kristen Hodges. I guess we haven't had a book fair in like, what, fifteen years?
Uh, I don't know if it's been that long.
Wendy said before she came, there was a book fair. So, it's been a while, but we played Christmas music and we made it a fun event for parents to come in and shop for Christmas and see the kids and their wish list, so, thank you for saying that. And also Shannon Tutz was there helping them out as well. And thanks for your support, with you and Hannah were able to make it to the curriculum night.
Thank you, Katie. Pete?
Yeah, so I, the first piece is I just wanted to share the challenges that, that we're facing with masks. I mean, it's, um, it's challenging in athletics when the kids are out on the court, running around, keeping their masks up properly, but the kids are doing their best and I, I just wanted to advocate for the coaches and the players. Um, they're doing a, a great job, the best that they can. We, we are getting a lot of feedback from a lot of, um, individuals and it's been critical. So I wanted to be transparent about that. Uh, we are taking steps to get better. Just the other night, we got a representative from another school district to stop the game in the middle of the game and address mask-wearing in both, both teams. So, it's, it's challenging to say the least for the kids to keep it up, coving. Uh, but we're doing our best and we're addressing it when the heat comes. Um, and in my report, I identified some ways that we're, we're addressing it. But it's gonna continue to be a challenge. I was watching a wrestling match on, online this, this weekend and I was telling Brent this today. One of our wrestlers had his mask behind and it got cut up over his eyes and he started to wrestle. So it's, it's definitely a challenge, but, um, I wanted to give kudos to the coaches. And Josh sees it being a coach, the coaches stop practice and address it, they don't just let it go. If it's blatantly around the, the student's chin, we always address it. Um, if it goes below the nose, we always just send, give them that reminder. So, it's gonna be a challenge as we move forward and we expect it, but we're gonna continue those reminders and model it and have plenty of masks and different kinds of masks, so. Um, and then when we, livestream, it just brings a whole new audience and, uh, you know, they, more eyes on it and it just, you know, we get several pieces of communication on after games. And I appreciate everybody trying to be on top of it, have us do the right thing. But just know that we're doing the right thing. We're trying to best. And remember that we're dealing with 14, 15, 16 year old kids, trying to get them to wear masks. So we're doing our best. The trainer, unfortunately, Aaron is leaving us. Aaron's been instrumental in injury prevention, working with our staff, our students, giving the resources. And not just the training resources here, but connecting families with outside resources, specialty doctors, getting staff in before the general public to get a CAT scan. So there's a lot of resources he brings. Unfortunately, he's leaving us. We do have another individual coming in, Seth. He's been here a few times subbing for Aaron, so he kind of knows our kids and our layout and the environment we have here. So I noted some of the transition pieces that Aaron's gonna be working with Seth on. But we wish Aaron the best. He's done, he's done great work since we brought awards on three years ago. So appreciate his work. The weight room is actually being put together right now. Our strength coach is doing that. Right before the meeting, he was doing it. It's going smoothly. We had to get some different hardware because hardware we had in there wasn't holding the equipment to the walls properly, so we gotta get the right hardware so that's like back a little bit. But he's working on that now. It should be done before Christmas break. And then he had so many fall awards. I didn't want to miss anybody. Tim from Ohio County Sports Report does a phenomenal job covering our games and every single accolade that our students earned. So if you want to see the accolades, please go to Ohio County Sports Report dot com. He does a phenomenal job. I just didn't want to miss everybody because accolades are still coming out as I was writing my report. So I just sent everybody there if you'd like to see the individual and the coaches who earned awards. And lastly, just an update as we move into the second part of our winter sports, our modified wrestling and our modified girls basketball. As far as coaching need, we've had our modified coach vacancy open for several months now. It's a cat. And nobody has applied for it. The people that I've reached out to in the wrestling community have either turned it down or just they're not ready to be coaching at this juncture. So we're still looking for a candor side coach. We have a Spencer side coach for modified wrestling. So we're still gonna have a season, but we always try to have a representative who can either unemerge the team. So if any of you have suggestions on a coach, please give me a suggestion of a coach.
Wayne Avene.
Wayne Avene, yeah. I was gonna suggest you.
Sure, I'll make you criteria.
Like last time Wayne got on the mat, he tore his bicep.
Yeah.
And then another coaching situation, we have one modified girl team definitely. We're on the verge of having two, so we may need to approve another coach. We're not sure yet. We have one coach for sure. We have another coach showing interest if we do have enough for two teams. Right now, we're on that cusp of seventh and eighth grade girls and needing two teams. So we're gonna have those conversations in the next couple of days.
Which part was that?
Modified girls basketball.
Oh, basketball.
Yep. And that's my report. Give me questions.
Hey, Pete. Hey, Angie, you mentioned to us in executive session that the report we reviewed in there for CSE was all you had to add tonight?
Yep, thank you for your support and improving those services.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
All right, so the two items that I selected to put in the report this month, I have additional information to go with both. That is in the written report. The first, talking about our professional learning from December. Katie talked about the work that the elementary school did. The high school, I gave a little blurb as to try to explain what the questions were that our seven, 12 teachers were going to focus on. It was good, they were good conversations. The, each team, and I reference them as the interdisciplinary team, so a grade level. So we had junior high, and then we had teachers representing ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade. They each identified that area of literacy that they believe their students struggle with. But each teacher brought a text with them and they shared. And that conversation alone was valuable for them to take, have an opportunity to see the type of text their students have to read in the variety of classes throughout a day. Was, I think, meaningful. It was a bit of an eye opener. One group talked about just setting purpose for reading because in technology class, the way that a student would need to interact with that kind of text versus literature is so different. And I think just having, being able to see that, that was step one. We didn't get as far in December as I had hoped with the junior, senior high, just because I overplanned. And today I had the opportunity to meet with the department chairs and talk with them and talk about January's early release day and offer a couple of options, but really get their feedback, their input. This is where, this is what we did. This is where our next step could be. Originally, we were hoping to start up peer visits again, but it's just not realistic to do that right now. We don't have enough substitutes. And even, you know, aside from having substitute teachers to cover so that teachers can peer visit with a focus area, they're covering each other's classes right now. So that, you know, it just, that's not realistic. So we shift gears, department chairs, what do you think? What should our next step be? And three ideas that surfaced for the work, the conversations, the continued conversations around literacy, helping our kids be better readers, increasing that vocabulary development. One was, one teacher asked, you know, is there a list of words? Those tier two words, the words that are common across all content areas. So not the science specific words, but across the whole content. So that was one question. And then if we have the list, could we just see a variety of strategies that are developmentally appropriate for senior high students? That came up. Then another thought was, can we have, or question, can we hear what the elementary is using, the strategies they're using? And are there strategies we can take that would be consistent and build that vertical connection? Which actually Ben happened to be the one that asked or presented that idea. And let me just see, less consistent strategies. And then sharing, just sharing those ideas that are common by the grade levels. So I feel really good. I sent them an email this afternoon, just said, thank you for that information, that input, the insight, the questions, the concerns, the thoughts. So that we can move forward and they feel that it's valuable work for them. And it's not, because I also shared in the meeting, we can have better lessons come in and just present. Brent and I met with them a couple of weeks ago again. They could give a two hour workshop or a one hour workshop and just give a slew of strategies to use. And I didn't know if that's really what the teachers, if that would be received well, because they, would they feel like, oh, they were just being told? But today I heard that, yeah, they might be okay with just having experts be able to share with them, here are developmentally appropriate strategies, and they could start trying them. And I think the other idea will be, we've been talking about having that vertical conversation between elementary and high school. And after hearing from them today, I think that's what we'll move forward with, whether, I don't know if it'll be January or February. I think it's important for the high school to hear about the work, the exact same work that the elementary did last year. And how can that transfer over to the high school? So those, that's what came out of the big conversations around literacy as a district initiative. And then we're gonna, we're gonna stick with that. And then the bottom portion, it's the regional networks. And really, I wanted to just, one, recognize each of our teachers that have taken on this responsibility. So in the past, a teacher would sign up, they would go maybe for half a day or at least two hours workshop at BOCES on the campus with other teachers that teach similar content. And they would work, they would hear about the state initiatives, instructional strategies and possibly work together on creating a new unit. Well, that doesn't work right now. So BOCES is, they've been trying different iterations of bringing these network teams together. I think they started off this year better than they did last year. This year, they at least had, they had a structure. They knew when the meetings were. It's only three or four times per content area for the year, and it's from 3:00 to 4:30. But it's still a challenge. It's a, it's a long day for a teacher. But our teachers, and I have to say, I think candor has the best representation on these networks. But today I had my regional meeting with this group, the curriculum instruction group. And we're trying to brainstorm, how do we support our teachers in each content area to get that state information to them? And instructional strategies, but be realistic with how we can do this, maybe be creative. We threw around a bunch of ideas. It's valuable information. Ben, I know you sit on one, Sarah, or I think you're not this year. Matt sits on one. And then obviously the other people that are listed, Becky Avene and I on the liaison for social studies and science. So Becky and I last week or the week before, after her, the science meeting, we just brainstormed ourselves. What else, what could we do to make sure that we're aligned with hearing at least what the region's doing and knowing what's going on at the state level? Again, I'm really, I'm thankful for our teachers, their investment, their commitment. And we have really good representation in the region that, you know, they're trying to help figure out how to make this work. And I hope everybody has a nice holiday.
Thank you, Ben. Matt?
Hello. So I know Ben did a great presentation because I've seen what he's done in the website. And I just, I do have to give, he's too modest to take credit. But what you saw was really almost, he did a ton of work on that. I helped to suggest things and brainstorm ideas, but the nuts and bolts, Ben's been doing a great job. And I really appreciate everything you've done for that, and I think it really shows. So we're looking forward to getting feedback from the community. It's going to be, Kate, it's gonna post it. Kate has also been really helpful in making sure that the website is looking great. So both Ben and Kate are really kind of grinding through, making sure the webpages look uniform all the way through. And all the content has been transferred over. So I don't want to forget Kate's contribution to that either. So she's going to post on website, the link to the new website and the feedback form. So anybody that's watching or anybody that goes to the site can look at the new site and give us some feedback. And then the digital equity survey of New York State has asked us to keep track of people's access to the internet. In the past, it was just how many students don't have access, how many students have devices? And we would just give them general numbers. Now we want, they want us to tie it to them as individual students. So we have to actually enter that data into School Tool and report it to the state. So that just started, really. The first poll data was December 6th. And then moving forward, we have to, if a student moves from one house to another, we're supposed to keep track of that. Obviously, we're building that process as we go, and we're figuring out the best way to collect that data. But I think that it's, while it's a little bit of a burden, I think it really does give us really great data on families. As I reported here, we have two, two of the families that reported to us out of the, you know, 293 have no internet and we already knew that, but they reported it anyway. It's really just the fact that they live in an area that just doesn't have, doesn't have cell service, doesn't have any kind of internet, which is a drag for them. And there's not, you know, other than driving out, connecting a satellite to their, satellite dish to their house, you know, not much else we can do. The other 18 families I reached out to after I got the survey results back. And two or three of, three of the families emailed back and said, we've already got a solution, so we can check them off the list. I will have to ask them to kind of take the survey gun so that we can get more accurate data. But, so three families have resolved that issue. One family didn't have a hotspot, so we were able to get that family a Wi-Fi hotspot. So it was, you know, again, one more family that we can get connected to, you know, just any kind of learning is great. So we will continue to collect that data. We're not, we don't have that survey active right now because we're looking to potentially use School Tool as an avenue for collecting it. So that the families can go into School Tool, fill it out. We don't have to manage the data or upload it. It's already uploaded to School Tool. So that process is, you know, throughout the rest of this year, we'll figure out with that procedures for families to continue to feed that, to give us that information. So, but any, anybody that you know of or that is watching this, if they hear, they know somebody that doesn't have internet but might be able to use a hotspot, you know, have to give me a call and we'll, I'll talk them through that. We just continue to, the reason we want to collect as much of this information as we can is they're saying that the state would use this data to help fund schools that have the most difficulty. So it's kind of a carrot to collect the data as, that there's possible.
Couple questions. Number one is, why 293 student, why not all?
So we, the family, the parents have filled it out. And so the, so we send that, we send it out to everybody in School Messenger, send out a text, send out an email to everybody that we had in School Messenger, put it on the website, but not everybody's in School Messenger, you know. So, so hopefully, once the app is out there and we can get more people to connect with us through the app, we can get a little bit more better feedback on surveys like that.
So the question is, is there any funding for doing this?
No.
I agree with you. It's excellent.
Yeah.
It'll help us get some funding and fix this problem.
Yeah, not, not at this point.
Send me a separate check and say, well, here's the cover, the edge of the earth, not yet.
But, you know, looking at, I think that it might be interesting now that satellite, Starlink satellite internet has, is decent. If there's grants out there for, fund, helping some families that are in the situation where they have the availability issue and a cost issue, whatever that criteria is, and maybe we could purchase internet for them. I'm not sure how we would do that, but if there's grant money out there that, fund it, maybe that's an option.
I was curious about that because I know there's some funding in the federal side, you know, several buildings that spread that across.
And I don't, I haven't heard where that's.
Yeah.
Coming down.
Any questions from that? Okay, moving on to all the usual report. Transportation.
What's this case today?
Okay, we have Mike Williams' log, his report in French.
Yeah, so I'm fortunate to have such a great administrative team. I don't have that much to add. They were thorough and complete. But what, you know, I do want to say and anybody watching as I come to here that we've been working with the health department and we have rapid tests here at school. As Pete and Katie mentioned, and Wayne and Craig are doing it at high school too. We've been enforcing the mask mandate and we've been good. Yes, we've had some people test positive, both students and adults with our school community. community, but we're staying under 1%. And so with that, and with all the efforts that everyone's been doing, we're able to stay open and that's what we're going to continue. We met his administrative team today and that's our plan. That's what the message I want to get out first. But of course, there, as, as you saw, Ben gave us a great example of as a team, how thorough people are. We went down several different scenarios, what ifs, and how will we still be able to first and foremost, stay open and have our students here in school in person five days a week? We've never been a super spreader, we're not going to become one. It's probably the safest place for students to be. It's where they'll get the best instruction, but in the event that we do have to close for a time, we are so ready to go and provide some very good remote instruction. But again, that's, that's not where we're headed. I know if you look around, some of our neighbors had to have gotten there for, for reasons that we just don't have. And again, we're, we're planning to keep it that way. I'm sure by now you all know that we have partnered with the Tidale County Health Department to provide a vaccine study here and that's tomorrow and then the second one will be, I think the 8th of January. And we've had a lot of people sign up. You don't need to sign up if you'd like to get vaccine with your children in the morning or if you're an adult who wants to get a third booster shot or maybe you gained your first shot, you can do that here in the afternoon. It's just that you don't have to have a reservation, although it's helpful if you call ahead if you need to organize.
It's Saturday, not Friday, Wayne.
Yeah, it's Saturday. I'm just getting ahead of my. Yep, not Friday. Thank you. It's Saturday, Saturday, the 18th and then January 10th, which is also a Saturday. So just before I close, I want to thank again Ben and Matt. That presentation is a good example of what I get to work with every day. I mean, they're, they're thorough, they're thoughtful, they're smart as a team. This administrative team's just been fantastic. And again, thank you, Ben, for, for the great presentation.
Thanks. Board comments?
Mike, oh, his comment on something, but I liked it. I, I really loved your presentation and I thought you did a fantastic job to show what a good teacher you are. The way you presented it, people who are not necessarily tech savvy, although we should.
Thanks.
It came across very well and what you and Matt have done and Kate has really come so far in such a short time. It's really, really good. And so it shows the passion of the entire administration team. So congratulations to you. You guys have all been well and Merry Christmas. Happy holidays. Hope you have a good new year. Yeah, I'm going to find out. Christmas everyone.
Any other board comments?
Merry Christmas everyone.
Stay safe. And we'll be back again here in a month. Oh, that's right. Do you have any visitors comments?
Okay, I have a quick, I have a quick one. Thank you all for your feedback. I really appreciate it. I just want to also say, so I just finished my administrative internship and I finished my administrative program. I just want to thank Matt because he is like the calm in my storm most days. He is smart, level-headed and just a wonderful human being to work with. And I've grown a ton working with all of the admin team. Matt and I work, we, we talk every day, multiple times a day. And I just want to say how much of an asset he is to our school district. So thank you, Mr. Gelder, so much.
And I had the pleasure of listening to part of your presentation to the Spanish kids.
Oh, good, yeah.
Ella was there at our.
Yeah, let's, let's hope it happens.
Yeah, yeah, let's hope.
We'll see, yeah.
Can be disappointed kids if it doesn't. Okay, if there's no other board comments, I guess we're out of business, so we're done. Thank you all and have a Merry Christmas.